Check, check, one, two, mic check, audio check, podium mic. Check, check, one, two, mic check, dais mic.
The planning commission meeting will be starting shortly. Thank you for your patience.
Present.
Commissioner Biagini.
Here.
Commissioner Chair Kuru.
Here.
Commissioner Wang.
Here.
Commissioner Buza.
Present.
Commissioner Saleem.
Here.
Chair Crutchlow is not in the chambers, so for now I will mark him as absent. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, if I'd like to make a motion to exclude.
Why don't we wait until we see if he arrives late, then the motion won't be necessary.
Okay. Commissioner Baghna Bar has noticed that he's unable to attend the August 13th meeting. Why would we have this here?
I don't know why. That's from a previous one, so.
Move on.
Thank you.
Okay.
On the declaration of commission procedures.
Do we got your vote to excuse Commissioner Eric?
Not yet.
We want to wait for.
We want to wait. Okay. Declaration of commission procedures, Secretary. Can you please free them?
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair. Public hearings are conducted by the Chair in accordance with the following procedures. The Chair of the Commission directs all activity during the hearings. All comments shall be addressed to the Commission. Any item on this agenda may be continued to a subsequent hearing. Applicants will be allotted up to 10 minutes to present and justify proposals following staff presentation of the item. Other speakers will be given up to 2 minutes. The applicant is allotted up to 5 minutes for rebuttal of comments. No additional comments will be accepted upon the close of public hearing, although the Commission reserves the right to direct questions to any speaker on any matter. Special procedures or time limits may be applied to any items as prescribed by the Chair. Appeal of commission actions must be filed in writing within 7 calendar days.
Okay. Copies of the current agenda and staff reports for each of the items on the agenda are available from the Planning Division office on the Friday afternoon preceding the meetings and available online. Continues and exceptions. This part of the meeting allows for applicants, members of the public, or other interest party to request an item to be continued without a hearing, withdrawn, or taken out of order. There are any requests, are there any requests from any of the applicants, or somebody in the public, or the Commission for a continuance or an exception for any of the items on tonight's agenda?
We do not have any hands raised, and no one in the chambers is requesting a continuance.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
No motion needed.
No motion needed. Okay. The Planning Commission has 7 members. Whenever the full Commission is not present, applicants have the option to continue their items to another meeting. Unless PC, Planning Commission members are refused due to conflict of interest or due to process reclusals. Chair, there are 2 items on the consent calendar today. Secretary Chair, would you please read the consent calendar for us?
Thank you. The procedure for the consent calendar is as follows. Consent calendar items may be enacted, approved, or adopted by one motion unless requested to be removed by anyone for discussion or explanation. If any members, sorry, hold on. Of the Planning Commission, staff, the applicant, or member of the public wishes to comment on a consent calendar item, or would like the item to be heard on the regular agenda, please make this request now. Items listed on tonight's consent calendar with associated file numbers constitute public hearing items. We have our 1A Planning Commission meeting minutes of August 13, 2025, our last meeting, as consent calendar consideration.
Public presentation. Would anybody in the public would like to address the commission?
We need to take an action. We need to vote on the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of August 13.
Second, Commissioner Chair Kuru.
Thank you.
If I may just through the Chair. Want to always give the compliment to our staff who put the diligent report. Last meeting was pretty heavy. Thank you, Elizabeth, for all the minutes and the hard work that goes with very succinct.
Thank you.
As a person who used to write the minutes, I know the labor of love that goes into it.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
The motion on the floor, Commissioner Biagini, seconded by Commissioner Chair Kuru to approve the consent calendar, item 1A. Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
So I need to use myself?
You do if you have not listened to the meeting, so you will, can you cast your vote as such? Or do I, on the screen?
He can, he.
I've seen. Okay, wait a minute.
Okay, so we have, Commissioner Wang, can you cast your vote? Is your answer yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Would this be?
Thank you, the motion passed. Thank you.
This be the appropriate time to make a motion on Commissioner Crutchlow?
Excuse me, Eric?
Commissioner. It's, I mean, have we received confirmation that he's not coming? I mean, it's just if he shows up in 30 minutes.
We'll be over by then. I hope to be over by then.
Oh, no, it won't be.
But nice try.
I love your optimism. I'll make sure we don't adjourn without a motion if he hasn't shown up by the end.
I just got a text from him. I'd like to make the motion to excuse Commissioner Crutchlow.
Second. Oh, sorry.
One second. The motion is made by Commissioner Biagini, seconded by Commissioner Chair Kuru to excuse Commissioner Crutchlow. Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
Yes. Yeah.
Commissioner Saleem, we're just waiting for you. Thank you very much. Very good, the motion passed. Thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth, are there any members of the public that would like to briefly address the Commission on any item that is not on the agenda?
No one in the council chambers is requesting as such, nor online, so no.
Okay. Moving on to the public hearing. Okay, public hearing action unconditional use permit, PLN 25-00131, for a new unmanned AT&amp;T telecommunication facility with the installation of a rooftop mounted antennas and ground equipment located at 2600 Great America Way. Staff, do you have anything?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I do staff's presentation.
Keep us at the edge of our chairs.
Moving on, Commissioners, again, my name is Alex Tayus, Assistant Planner here with the City of Santa Clara, and tonight I'll be presenting the first item of the agenda. As mentioned previously, this is PLN 25-00131, 2600 Great America Way. So as mentioned previously, this is a conditional use permit for a new unmanned AT&amp;T telecommunication facility. This facility will be installed in an existing rooftop, and there will be associated ground equipment next to a trash enclosure on the site. As mentioned, this item is in front of this commission tonight just because Santa Clara City Code Section 18.66.040 states that all new wireless telecommunication facilities need to be evaluated by the Planning Commission. Righty, so here's the existing site, highlighted orange from the screen. I think it's red, but yeah. So it's an existing office park called Santa Clara Gateway that was developed back in the early 2000s by the urban company. The antennas will be located on the rooftop of the building closest to Great America Way, which will be, yes, there's my cursor, right? The building on this building, you will see, I'll show you the site plan and the floor plan shortly. The site is 14 acres. On the north, it's undeveloped. Its own planned development is related to this Santa Clara Gateway project. On the south is currently an outdoor recreational field, which will be the future site of Related City Place. It will be a future city park. The east will have, it's currently an outdoor recreational site. Also, in the future, it will be part of the Related project. And on the west is other office park, also related to this development. The site's general plan designation is high intensity office, research and development. And because this is a planned development, back when it was developed by the urban company, the zoning is BD. Righty, now I'm going to talk a little bit of context, so the surrounding uses. I've kind of already talked a little bit about it, but just to emphasize, surrounding the site, we have more office buildings. As you can see, highlighted yellow, or I guess with the yellow dot. On the north, we have the undeveloped land next to the state route. And on the south, currently it's outdoor recreation. So the CUP scope, the facility will be located on the rooftop, and will be operating in accordance to the Federal Communications Commission's regulation. So as required by our new wireless facility applications, they need to provide a report made by an engineer that will talk about the radio frequency radiation and how it meets the emission limits set by the FCC, which this project will. Next, I'm just showing you the elevations. As mentioned previously, the equipment will be located on an existing rooftop. They will be replacing a portion of the pair pin and place the equipment there, and then it will be screened with a material that will match the existing mechanical screening, but it will allow the equipment to be able to, I guess, use as, I guess, for the purpose of telecommunications, because the existing screening will block the, I guess, the communication or the equipment signal. Righty, right here is the site plan based on the development plans. As I've mentioned previously, the generator enclosure will be located to an existing trash enclosure, which is here on the bottom part of the site. The future related, well, I guess the future city park will be located on the parcel next to it, but it will be over 50 feet away from the property line. So, and it will be screened to match the existing trash enclosures materials, and also include some vine around the enclosure, so it won't be visible, the generator. So next up, it's a close-up of the floor plan of the equipment and also the enclosure. On the left, you can see a close-up of the equipment that's going to be located around the rooftop. As mentioned again, it's going to be located behind the mechanical screening. And here, as you can see, what I'm pointing on my cursor, it's the, they will be replacing some of that mechanical screening with that new material to allow, I guess, the frequency or the signal to go out from the equipment. On the right, we have the equipment enclosure. As mentioned here, it will match the existing materials of the trash enclosure, and it will be pre-tucked away from any public eye. Righty, so next up is consistency with the sitting code. As all use permits, there needs to be, the findings need to be met, and these are the related findings that need to be met to use permit to be approved. And all these findings are met, and they're mentioned in more detail with the resolution. The use also has to be consistent with the general plan. This use with the new telecommunication equipment will be consistent with the 2 following general plan policies. We have, the first one is 5.3.1-P17, which is to promote economic vitality by maintaining the city level of service for public facilities and infrastructure, including high-quality telecommunications. Just because the existing office park is near the Levi Stadium, AT&amp;T saw the need to increase their coverage, especially how the city will be having the Super Bowl and then the World Cup next year. Lastly, this is, project's also consistent with general plan policy 5.10.3-P10, which is maintain the city level of service for high-quality utilities. So again, just this type of telecommunication equipment needs to be upgraded, especially when new technology comes online. So that's just where AT&amp;T is coming in and trying to add this equipment on the rooftop. So with our public outreach, we were consisting with our city's public outreach policy by mailing out to 52 property owners within the 500 feet of the project site. And as of today, we didn't receive any written or phone call comments for this project. This project didn't require a community meeting, because the project site is far away from the residential neighborhood. Like every project, we need to evaluate to make sure it's consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. This project is consistent, as it's a categorically exempt due to the section 15303D of the CECL guidelines, which is new construction of utility extensions. It's, they're extending the utilities, existing telecommunication infrastructure in the city. And so staff is recommending that the project will be determined categorically exempt from formal environmental review per Section 15303D, new construction of utility extensions of the CECL guidelines, and adopt a resolution to approve the conditional use permit for this new unmanned AT&amp;T telecommunication facility with the installation of the rooftop mounted antennas and ground equipment located at 2600 Great America Way.
Staff, do you have anything?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I do staff's presentation.
Keep us at the edge of our chairs.
Moving on, Commissioners, again, my name is Alex Tayus, Assistant Planner here with the City of Santa Clara, and tonight I'll be presenting the first item of the agenda. As mentioned previously, this is PLN 25-00131, 2600 Great America Way. So as mentioned previously, this is a conditional use permit for a new unmanned AT&amp;T telecommunication facility. This facility will be installed in an existing rooftop, and there will be associated ground equipment next to a trash enclosure on the site. As mentioned, this item is in front of this commission tonight just because Santa Clara City Code Section 18.66.040 states that all new wireless telecommunication facilities need to be evaluated by the Planning Commission. Righty, so here's the existing site, highlighted orange from the screen. I think it's red, but yeah. So it's an existing office park called Santa Clara Gateway that was developed back in the early 2000s by the urban company. The antennas will be located on the rooftop of the building closest to Great America Way, which will be, yes, there's my cursor, right? The building on this building, you will see, I'll show you the site plan and the floor plan shortly. The site is 14 acres. On the north, it's undeveloped. Its own planned development is related to this Santa Clara Gateway project. On the south is currently an outdoor recreational field, which will be the future site of Related City Place. It will be a future city park. The east will have, it's currently an outdoor recreational site. Also, in the future, it will be part of the Related project. And on the west is other office park, also related to this development. The site's general plan designation is high intensity office, research and development. And because this is a planned development, back when it was developed by the urban company, the zoning is BD. Righty, now I'm going to talk a little bit of context, so the surrounding uses. I've kind of already talked a little bit about it, but just to emphasize, surrounding the site, we have more office buildings. As you can see, highlighted yellow, or I guess with the yellow dot. On the north, we have the undeveloped land next to the state route. And on the south, currently it's outdoor recreation. So the CUP scope, the facility will be located on the rooftop, and will be operating in accordance to the Federal Communications Commission's regulation. So as required by our new wireless facility applications, they need to provide a report made by an engineer that will talk about the radio frequency radiation and how it meets the emission limits set by the FCC, which this project will. Next, I'm just showing you the elevations. As mentioned previously, the equipment will be located on an existing rooftop. They will be replacing a portion of the pair pin and place the equipment there, and then it will be screened with a material that will match the existing mechanical screening, but it will allow the equipment to be able to, I guess, use as, I guess, for the purpose of telecommunications, because the existing screening will block the, I guess, the communication or the equipment signal. Righty, right here is the site plan based on the development plans. As I've mentioned previously, the generator enclosure will be located to an existing trash enclosure, which is here on the bottom part of the site. The future related, well, I guess the future city park will be located on the parcel next to it, but it will be over 50 feet away from the property line. So, and it will be screened to match the existing trash enclosures materials, and also include some vine around the enclosure, so it won't be visible, the generator. So next up, it's a close-up of the floor plan of the equipment and also the enclosure. On the left, you can see a close-up of the equipment that's going to be located around the rooftop. As mentioned again, it's going to be located behind the mechanical screening. And here, as you can see, what I'm pointing on my cursor, it's the, they will be replacing some of that mechanical screening with that new material to allow, I guess, the frequency or the signal to go out from the equipment. On the right, we have the equipment enclosure. As mentioned here, it will match the existing materials of the trash enclosure, and it will be pre-tucked away from any public eye. Righty, so next up is consistency with the sitting code. As all use permits, there needs to be, the findings need to be met, and these are the related findings that need to be met to use permit to be approved. And all these findings are met, and they're mentioned in more detail with the resolution. The use also has to be consistent with the general plan. This use with the new telecommunication equipment will be consistent with the 2 following general plan policies. We have, the first one is 5.3.1-P17, which is to promote economic vitality by maintaining the city level of service for public facilities and infrastructure, including high-quality telecommunications. Just because the existing office park is near the Levi Stadium, AT&amp;T saw the need to increase their coverage, especially how the city will be having the Super Bowl and then the World Cup next year. Lastly, this is, project's also consistent with general plan policy 5.10.3-P10, which is maintain the city level of service for high-quality utilities. So again, just this type of telecommunication equipment needs to be upgraded, especially when new technology comes online. So that's just where AT&amp;T is coming in and trying to add this equipment on the rooftop. So with our public outreach, we were consisting with our city's public outreach policy by mailing out to 52 property owners within the 500 feet of the project site. And as of today, we didn't receive any written or phone call comments for this project. This project didn't require a community meeting, because the project site is far away from the residential neighborhood. Like every project, we need to evaluate to make sure it's consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. This project is consistent, as it's a categorically exempt due to the section 15303D of the CECL guidelines, which is new construction of utility extensions. It's, they're extending the utilities, existing telecommunication infrastructure in the city. And so staff is recommending that the project will be determined categorically exempt from formal environmental review per Section 15303D, new construction of utility extensions of the CECL guidelines, and adopt a resolution to approve the conditional use permit for this new unmanned AT&amp;T telecommunication facility with the installation of the rooftop mounted antennas and ground equipment subject to findings and conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is online, and they're happy to speak if you have about their project.
Thank you for your presentation. Do I have any members of the, of the Commission have any questions to the staff or the applicant?
Yep.
Commissioner Saleem?
So is the coverage that's promised from the new facility taking into consideration the related development and the differences of height? Is it going to be blocked by Related, or is it going to primarily serve Related?
That would be an applicant question.
Okay, I will. I'll save it for them.
Does the applicant present that can answer that question for the Commissioner?
Well, he has to give his presentation first.
Anybody, any other question? Anybody, any other question? I got a quick question for staff. Was the Santa Clara Airport advice of this, by any chance, did you send any notification to them? And the reason being is because you have 5G, 6G that you're going to be installing there. It's right in the approach of runway 12, 120. And there's problems with, even though the airlines by a few years ago tried to clean it up, but there's still the regional jets and the private jets there don't have the equipment to clean that up for the instrument landing in case of that. So that's what I wanted to know. If you advise Santa Clara Airport if they had any concerns about that. There you go.
I'm used to it being green, so I'm like, I feel like red. It's like, oh, you're not supposed to be able to talk. But my understanding from the entitlement process, it has not been required to send a notification to the airport based on our practices. But yeah, yeah. So we did not send any notification to the?
You did not?
Did not, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Through the chair to staff. How tall is this from the roof? It shows 13 feet on your, am I seeing it correctly? Or is that an applicant question? There's an AT&amp;T, 10 feet eight, and then there's a 13 top of existing wall with the generator kind of sticking a little above, right? So, okay, am I seeing this to be 13 and a half?
That, that's correct.
Only because I saw it?
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Now further questions?
Through the chair, if I may. The screen wall where they're placing the mechanical equipment in the facility behind is an existing screen wall.
Okay.
So it exists on the building today. And they're just replacing a section of it.
But why is there the screen wall? Sorry, through the chair.
There's mechanical equipment up there already for the building itself, so there's already a screen wall for the existing mechanical equipment.
So the screen wall is not for the towers exclusively?
No, it's just, that's correct.
They're just replacing a section of it, yeah.
To change it to a material that doesn't interfere with the emissions.
Correct.
So the phone calls can get through.
But it's in word from the building, right? You can't see it from the street, can you?
You cannot.
Not with the screens.
Okay, so we can have the applicant then do a presentation?
Ashley, you should now be able to unmute and speak. And if you have a presentation, you can also share it.
Thank you so much. This is Ashley Smith with Epic Wireless Group, working on behalf of AT&amp;T. Can everyone hear me tonight?
Yes.
Perfect. So thank you, Alex, for your presentation. I think you went over everything, just as I would for this AT&amp;T project. We believe we found the best location, the least intrusive, to provide the coverage to the community in this area. And that's with being, placing AT&amp;T's antennas and equipment behind the existing mechanical screen on the rooftop, and then also screening the generator location on the ground to match what is existing for their generator as well as the trash enclosure. And I am here to answer any questions in regards to the project that any of the commissioners have.
Any questions from, no, apparently we don't have any questions.
I only have the question for the applicant of how will this?
Mike?
Oh, mute your mic, please.
There we go. So I had the question about how will this be blocked by the Related project? And is it higher than, or is it intended to serve the Related project?
Yeah. And can you clarify what the Related project is? Our office is only working the AT&amp;T project exclusively.
Yeah, leave that to staff to bring it up.
Staff, can you enlighten them on the Related project? In 100 words or less, please.
Easier something, Dan. The Related project is a project just sort of south, southeast-ish of this site that will have a number of mixed-use buildings, some of which may be tall towers that can go up to 219 feet, residential office use, as well some industrial uses. So I think the commissioners' concern may be any blockage from the taller buildings that are allowed on that Related site, although not constructed yet. They, they do have entitlements to instruct, construct.
Yeah, and is that on the same property? Or is that going to be on a different?
Near and adjacent.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Near and adjacent.
It's, yeah, it's really close, just, just south of your property. So between, between the stadium and your property, basically, where the former golf course and landfill are. So all that vacant area, just south of you and southeast of you would be where those would be allowed.
Okay, looks like a Stars and Stripes drive around that area.
Correct, correct.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I mean, as far as frequencies and whatnot, everyone operates on different ones, you know, AT&amp;T, Verizon, they all operate differently. So I don't believe there should be any concerns. And I believe there are towers located closer to Levi Stadium. So I, I don't believe there will be any issue with any PIM issues or anything like that. We're, we're pretty far away from that property. So I don't foresee any issues with frequencies or anything of that nature, any interference or anything.
I think I was trying to be more proactive in your favor, that you may want to look at the negative effect that it's going to have for your coverage estimates because it quite likely will get blocked from line of sight in a large substantial area and cut down any benefit of coverage that you were looking for in the tower itself. So you may want to look into it a little bit.
Yeah, we definitely will bring this to AT&amp;T's attention. By chance, do you have any information regarding the frequencies?
I don't on the frequencies, but we can point you at the site that, or on multiple websites that discuss the Related development, which is 45 acres, I believe, and a few.
And possibly data centers.
Hundreds of thousands of square feet of development. Nine million square feet of development. Yeah, it's, it's a small city.
Ashley, it sounds like, it sounds like you didn't do your homework when it came to this presentation here regarding the cell towers you want to put up and Related. That's one of the big projects we have coming in here. So I suggest you go back to the drawing board, take a quick look.
Oh, yeah, I, I'm not really concerned about any of that new development. It looks like we're over 3,000 feet away from that golf range. And I, I just don't foresee any issues with the coverage or anything in that area.
To be more, more, more specific, we are tracking to the height that the Related project allows and the height of this building. So more for your, for your project, what's the total height of the building?
Let me pull that up real quick. It looks like the total height appears to be, so the actual building to the parapet is almost 100 foot. And then with the top of the mechanical screen, we're at 113, and AT&amp;T's equipment's located around 109.
Okay. And so what we are saying is check the height of Related when it's fully built, and if the coverage intercepts the, the future state. Again, what Commissioner Saleem was really trying to be a little more proactive for your own benefit, but what we want you to be prepared for, should there be interception, is because of the height that Related project already allows for.
Right, and I appreciate that being brought up. But with it being over 3,000 feet away, even if it's 200 feet for those buildings, I just don't see there being any issue.
Got it, Ashley. And I have one more question through the chair. So typically, when it comes to these kind of projects, we see the radii or the patches that this would allow for coverage. Do you have that in your presentation, Ashley?
Yes, let me go ahead. Am I able to share? Let's see.
Yeah, you should be able to share.
Okay, are you able to see my PDF by chance?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, there it is.
This is the existing coverage currently right now. So everything in yellow is reliable coverage in transit and indoor. The blue is reliable coverage only outdoors. And then the green is reliable service indoors and outdoors. So then, this is existing. And then when you switch over to the next page, it's what is proposed with AT&amp;T being at the 109 Rad Center line.
Okay.
So most of the objective is to the east and the west for this project because there's already service down by Stars and Stripes, and it's already reliable. There is an azimuth pointing down that way, but majority of it is the, the coverage in the east and the west.
That's where some of our developments are going to be, so.
And how far is it from the Levi Stadium? Which is what was said.
You're, you're probably about, I'd say it's less than, less than a half a mile from Levi Stadium.
I think this was intended, at least in the description.
Yeah, in the description, yeah. But I'm looking also, if you, looking over the future development across Levi Stadium and also the other side of Related too. So by what I see there, it looks like they're going to cover everything, and we're looking at a lot of homes being built around there.
Yeah. Don't get us wrong, we need you.
We just want to make sure.
Okay.
Fair warning.
All right.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Yeah, problem.
Elizabeth, are there any public speakers?
No, no one in the chambers nor online.
None? Okay.
Close public debate? Like to make a motion to close public debate?
Yeah, just make a motion to close the public hearing.
The motion was made by Commissioner Biagini, seconded by Commissioner Bhantigarh to close public hearing. Go ahead and cast your vote, please. Very good, the motion passed, thank you.
So if there's no other questions or any objections, do I hear a motion to, for the approval of the project? Make a motion?
I'd respectfully request two motions.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
Two motions, please.
Two motions, please.
Yeah, I got that. I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission determine that the project is categorically exempt from formal environmental review per Section 15303D, new construction of utility extensions of the CEQA Guidelines. Period. That's the first motion.
Who likes to make the second?
I seconded this one.
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Biagini, seconded by Commissioner Chiracuru to approve Staff Recommendation 1. Go ahead and cast your vote, please. Thank you, the motion passed.
Okay, I'd like to make another motion, unless you wanted to.
Go for it, please, go ahead.
Motion that the Planning Commission recommend that we adopt a resolution to approve the conditional use permit for a new unmanned AT&amp;T telecommunication facility with the installation of rooftop-mounted antennas and ground equipment, subject to findings and conditions of approval.
Okay, I have a second already before you got done. Commissioner Saleem?
I just want my name in the minutes.
Okay.
Motion was made by Commissioner Biagini, seconded by?
Commissioner Saleem.
Commissioner Saleem to approve Staff Recommendation 2. Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
We're moving along pretty good, folks, so let's, let's get going.
Very good, the motion passed, thank you.
Reports, reports in commission and liaisons and committee.
We're actually on to item three, which is the study session.
Study section, yeah, let's, let's get that done. See, everybody's excited about that. Boy.
Trying to shorten it.
That was a beautiful presentation with the study session. I'd like to thank you for that, so.
You're welcome. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Alexander Abbey, I'm the Assistant City Attorney. A few months ago, a couple of the commissioners reached out and asked for a refresher on some due process principles relevant to public hearings. So this is to respond to that request. So we're going to look at tonight first a refresher on the fundamentals of due process. You've all heard these things before.
Excuse me, just before you get started, is one of the commissioners that asked for this not present tonight?
It was not the chair.
Was not the chair that asked for this?
Okay, but move on.
He's welcome to watch the video after the meeting. And I'm happy to answer any of his due process questions separately. So anyway, we're going to look at four topics. First, a refresher on the elements of due process, which you've all heard before. We're also going to look at a few court cases concerning due process in public meetings. Most of these focus on the specific issue of bias. Then I'm going to give you some real-world examples of how due process issues can come up at public meetings. And by real world, I mean I block copied the transcript of some things that the seven of you said at meetings. So brace yourselves. And of course, we'll have time for questions. So to the extent we don't cover a hypothetical, feel free to present your own scenarios for discussion. Also, when I mentioned to Glenn, the city attorney, that we'd be discussing public meetings tonight, he thought it'd be a good time to introduce some new policies that the council recently adopted on a pilot basis for meeting procedures. Unfortunately, he then wasn't able to be here tonight, and he wishes he could have been. So we're not going to be talking about new meeting procedures yet, but he's going to be a guest star at some upcoming meeting to discuss some minor changes to meeting procedures. So let's get started with the due process fundamentals. If you don't mind, I'm going to move to my old seat because one of the commissioners has given me a look, and I don't feel comfortable. I won't tell you which one. No, seriously, it's actually just nice to be able to see all of you. I feel a little constricted over there. Okay, so our first topic is the elements of due process. And again, this is a refresher. The due process clause, of course, is part of the Constitution. It reads, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." The exact language appears in both the United States and California constitutions. And in Santa Clara, we put this into our Code of Ethics and Values. The code says that the city will extend equal opportunities and due process to all parties in matters under consideration. So when does this come up in city government? Well, it comes up whenever the city conducts a public hearing on a quasi-judicial matter. And a quasi-judicial matter is where the commission is acting sort of like seven judges on a court, applying the law to a set of facts. You're not changing the law, you're applying the law to a set of facts, and then determining whether the facts meet the standards of that law to reach a decision. And that's to be distinguished from legislative matters, like passing an ordinance affecting the whole city or amending the general plan. For legislative matters, you're writing a new law. And for legislative matters, due process is satisfied by going to the ballot box and either re-electing or electing new council members, who then appoint the planning commissioners. Here's some examples of common quasi-judicial decisions: conditional use permits, variances, subdivision maps, license revocations, permit revocations, terminating or disciplining employees. These are all situations where you're applying existing laws to a specific set of facts. And in each of these circumstances, somebody's property rights are affected, either how they're using their land or in the context of employment, whether they receive discipline or termination. Due process protections apply to all of these actions. And that applies even if you're just making a recommendation and not a final decision. So what does it mean when we say due process protections apply? Well, it means that the people who, whose property rights are affected, they are entitled to notice before you take action, mailed notice, posted notice, published notice, a reasonable opportunity to be heard, so they get to appear before you and plead their case. You then have to make a decision based on valid findings. They have a right, in other words, to know what basis you had for making your decision. And then when you make your decision, the hearing has to be before an impartial decision-maker. You're supposed to come into it without any bias toward the decision that you're about to make or towards the person applying for the permit. So, let's fly through these pretty quickly. Notice, you don't actually even need to worry about, because planning staff handles this for you. It's typically a letter sent to a project applicant and surrounding neighborhood, surrounding neighbors, publication of a statement in the weekly, posting a notice at three locations in the city for some kinds of decisions we actually post at the project site. So, planning staff is good at this, they will take care of it for you. Next is reasonable opportunity to be heard. That means that any, any interested person gets to speak on an item. Under the Brown Act, you don't actually even need to be a resident of the city. You don't have to be a resident of the United States. Anyone who wants to speak can speak. And I'm sure this seems obvious, but due process also requires that commissioners listen. So, please pay attention. There was a case out of Los Angeles when a project applicant was speaking, but several of the members of the commission had actually left the dice at that point. Two others were talking to each other. One of them was on the phone, and the applicant said, you know, "It doesn't seem like anybody's actually listening to me." They denied his permit. He sued for due process violation, and he won. So, please try to stay awake, if you, at least for quasi-judicial decisions. If you'd like to take a nap, you're welcome to do so during one of my presentations. Now, because property interests are directly affected by quasi-judicial decisions, we always give extra time to an applicant applying for a permit, typically 10 minutes. And then all members of the public will be given a shorter time to comment. Due process also requires that the applicant get additional time at the conclusion of the public hearing for rebuttal, usually five minutes. And that's because an applicant has the right to respond to all the evidence that's raised during the hearing. So, if an applicant doesn't learn until the middle of the public hearing that his neighbors are concerned about, you know, the roof pitch of his project, and he didn't address the roof pitch in his initial 10 minutes, then by giving him a rebuttal, he gets to address anything that came up during the hearing. And then finally, a word of caution. If something new comes up after the close of the public hearing, you might need to give the applicant another chance to speak. In one case, a council voted against a project because of concerns over parking, but no one brought up parking as an issue during the public hearing at all. They closed the public hearing, and then they made a decision based on the parking, and the applicant sued, saying that was a due process violation. So, just be aware, if something new comes up after the close of the public hearing, you may need to reopen it to address that limited issue. Now, let's get into the third part of due process, and that's the importance of making findings. Findings are legally relevant sub-conclusions that expose your mode of analysis. They bridge the analytical gap between raw data and an ultimate decision. Please forgive the cheesy image. Another way of looking at it is findings are legal footprints that local officials leave to explain how they, how they applied the facts to establish standards and arrived at a decision. Sometimes people call these Topanga findings, because the requirement came out of a California Supreme Court case, Topanga Association for a scenic community versus County of Los Angeles. The purpose of findings is to provide a framework for making principled decisions, enhancing the integrity of the administrative process. They help make the analysis orderly and reduce the likelihood that the city will randomly leap from evidence to conclusions. Findings also enable parties to determine whether and on what basis they should seek judicial review. In other words, to help project applicants and project opponents better understand how you reached a decision. Because even if they disagree with your decision, they're less likely to sue if they have some confidence in the process and understand how you got from point A to point B. Findings inform a reviewing court of the basis for the city's decision. They give the court some road signs. Without findings, a court reviewing the city's action would have to sift through the entire record. But maybe most important for our purposes today, findings ensure that the decision is based on valid regulatory grounds. Findings are based on our code, on state law, on cases interpreting the Constitution. For all the findings we adopt, we know that there's a valid ground for regulation. So, when you approve a variance, you make a finding that there's something unique about a property. When you approve a use permit, you make a finding that the use may sometimes be acceptable, but in this particular case, this specific location with appropriate conditions, it's compatible with the surrounding uses. And when you make an environmental determination, you find that we've mitigated all the environmental impacts to less than significant levels. If you can't make that finding, you can disapprove the project. That's a valid regulatory basis for saying no, because our laws prohibit developers from destroying the environment. In all these circumstances, the findings that you make guide you on whether to say yes or no. And whatever option you choose, we know we have a valid regulatory basis for doing so, because you're tying your decision to these findings. So, how do you adopt them? Well, they're set forth in the city code, or in some cases, by state law. Staff will usually prepare draft findings for you prior to your hearing, and these are included in the resolutions you adopt. By the time you get to the hearing, you've presumably read the draft resolution. If you agree with the draft findings, you vote to adopt the resolution, like you did about five minutes ago. You can and should revise them as necessary to ensure that they reflect the evidence and your decision. And crucially, you need to ask whatever questions you need in order to make the findings. But remember, everything you say at a public hearing goes into the record. At Planning Commission, again, we put the findings into the resolution, but courts will look at the entire administrative record. In fact, for many of our other commissions, like the HLC, that's the only way they make findings. Their discussions are the record that creates the findings. So, it's important that when you ask questions of an applicant, you try to ask questions that are relevant to the findings. So, for instance, a CUP, again, is about neighborhood compatibility and consistency with the general plan and zoning. So, if somebody applies for a CUP for a bookstore, you could ask questions about the design of the store, whether there will be a place for customers to sit, and whether there'll be a coffee shop, whether the bookstore is too close to residential uses, whether it's not close enough to residential uses, whether the architectural style is compatible with the neighborhood. You would not ask, "What authors will you include or not include?" Bookstore owner, will you agree not to include books concerning a particular topic? Will you agree to have your bookstore focus only on books based on a particular religion? What percentage markup will you put on your book sales? What is your anticipated profit margin? None of those issues deal with neighborhood compatibility. If you ask questions about them, then you're not tying your questions to the findings. And it's important that your questions be based on the findings. Finally, if the commission reaches a different conclusion than the staff's recommendation, then you need to make a finding on the spot as part of your motion, as you've done many times before, when you disagreed with staff. For example, you know, I moved that we recommend denial of the use permit because we cannot make the required finding that the project is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, given the difference of height and massing from the surrounding structures. You can do that on the spot. If it's too complicated to do on the spot, then as you know, as we've done before, you can continue it, allow staff to prepare the findings in a resolution, and we'll bring back the resolution reflecting what you want at the next meeting. I can see we've got some questions.
Well, I have one. Then, is it proper to ask a question if the applicant has the financial means to run a given bookstore, whatever?
It depends. Again, you have to distinguish legislative versus quasi-judicial. So, I'm assuming you're asking about quasi-judicial. If it's legislative, you can ask almost anything you want. And that matters, because sometimes the issue before you will be a rezone. If it's a rezone, you know, you don't really have to make findings. So, you have a lot more flexibility, depending on what kind of decision is for you. If it's a development agreement, another legislative act, and the city's a party to it. And actually, one of the findings you have to make for a development agreement is whether or not the project is likely to be completed within the timeframe. So, it's very relevant in that case. But for a CUP, for the bookstore, I question whether or not you could. Because, I mean, if it's compatible with the surroundings, well, I mean, are you really going to substitute your judgment for the business owners as to whether or not their business model is good?
That's what I'm getting at. Like, you know, somebody knows somebody, and they think he's gone bankrupt seven times. Why should we let him open up a bookstore? That type of thing. I would think would not be appropriate, but I'm waiting for your legal opinion.
They, well, again, you're affecting someone's property rights. So, what you're doing in that circumstance, if you voted no based on your belief that they couldn't make their business goals, you are taking away a property right based on your belief in how they're going to perform in their business. You're substituting your business judgment for theirs. I think we're pretty good at a lot of planning issues, but I don't know how good we are predicting somebody's success.
I kind of take that as getting into a little bit of dangerous business.
I would suggest you refrain from doing that. And again, we've enshrined the findings in the resolution. Hopefully, the court looks at what we put in the reso. But if you ask those questions at a public hearing, you've created an administrative record that suggests you're basing your decision on something else.
Something other.
And they have the right to fail. If a property's owned commercial, and they want to open up a business that fails, they have the right to do that.
Now, now that I have a question here, that you used the example of a bookstore.
Sure.
And you said, "Well, really just books," or "certain types of books." You know where I'm going to come from now. How about if they decide to have an adult bookstore? And it's a neighborhood that doesn't fit the neighborhood and the area around there? That's, what, what can we do about that?
Well, that's, that's a lot more nuanced, and it's unfortunately too complicated to get into.
You opened the door, that's what I'm going at.
I did, and it's an excellent question. But I will tell you, there are decades of case law on this issue, and we have crafted our existing regulations carefully. We do allow for the possibility of adult businesses, quote unquote, within the city. If you look at a map, and you look at where we've zoned for them, we call them special regulated businesses, there's about three locations in the city where you can cite them. But yes, we can regulate based on the proximity to residences, or schools, or other sensitive uses for adult uses.
The regulations, and knowing a couple of them there up and down the El Camino. But things have changed, and we put in residential areas almost right across the street, across the street from them or next door to them. So, that completely is changing the whole nature of what you just said. So, the city is growing around them. So, that's another.
Well, two factors. One is, for good or bad, we cannot completely prohibit adult uses. We simply can't do that, whether it's, you know, by simply saying there are no adult uses allowed, or by making it physically impossible to cite them anywhere in the city. We have to allow for them to be cited somewhere. So, what happens when an area changes, and a use that was once appropriate is no longer appropriate? Well, you change the zoning, and they become legal non-conforming. And if you want the use to go away, so that they're not still legal non-conforming 100 years from now, you pass a law creating an amortization period. You figure out what is the amount of time that the business needs to recover on its investment. I have no idea what period of time that would be for an, for an adult bookstore. But, you know, this happened in a lot of cities where there were, like, industrial uses that, you know, the areas were changing to commercial, and they wanted the businesses that were still there to recover on their investment, but they eventually wanted those businesses out because they were too close to residential areas. So, they created an amortization period. There's something similar for billboards. You know, you can't just eliminate billboards. You have to create an amortization period where they're prohibited, and you can keep the existing one you have for X years, seven years, until it's depreciated to a value where now you've got to comply with the zoning. So, we'd have to study, what is the appropriate amortization period? And we'd have to enact an ordinance providing for that. And then we'd have to brace ourselves for the inevitable lawsuits. And it's a First Amendment issue, which is a fundamental right. So, if we lose, then we pay attorney's fees, and we'd have to weigh the pros and cons of fighting that lawsuit. So, there, like I said, there are a lot of nuances. That's a very complicated question, but a good one.
And through the, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, so, in same vein of conversation, let's say the city's economic revenue is one of the key reasons the project, is that an option to ask? Like, what is, so let's say, the bookstore case is now taking a lot of electricity from our SVP.
It's a very bright bookstore.
It's a very bright bookstore, exactly. And it is now justified because it pays the electricity bill through our SVP, and it's considered a source of revenue to the city, and that has been touted as one of the reasons why the bookstore should be allowed. How do we then decipher or separate the economic value of a lane use without understanding that it's, is it part of findings? Or is it just inquiry on the discretion of the approval?
That's, that's, that's quite the complicated knot, Commissioner. So, it sounds like you're talking about not only the economics of the business, but also how does it affect the finances of the city? If the bookstore is buying so much power from the city that it actually affects, to a degree, the city's bottom line?
Or it's bringing so much revenue that despite it drawing out, they say, "Oh, the money is good, so we're going to allow it."
Yeah. Yeah, well.
Those seem to be issues from elected officials. Let them think about this over the weekend. Can we just keep on going in your presentation?
Thank you for the rescue, Mr. Chair. Let's stick a pin in that and move on.
Do I get a turn? I get a turn. Okay, so, I think I'm going to push a bunch of buttons all at once for everybody that's here. Is it, help us understand what is within our ability to find findings in related things to asking an applicant, "How much did it cost you? How much is it costing you to build it? How much are you going to sell it for?" Is that any way inside of our jurisdiction to ask those questions? Secondly, can we ask the question, "Hey, are you guaranteeing to hire union labor?" That's another question that we seem to have come up frequently, and I don't know if it's even a legitimate question that we, as the commission, can ask. And that's, actually, I'm going to leave it at those two. That's plenty. I'll save some more for later.
I'm glad I moved back a few feet. There are definitely circumstances where the finances of the development project are more relevant or less relevant. And the obvious example is residential development, because it is an important part of our general plan to provide for housing development and to ensure that there is enough housing that is affordable. And even market rate, given that we're in the most expensive county in the country, will the market rate housing be affordable? Those are valid questions to ask in the residential context. I can't think of a valid basis for doing it in an office context for a quasi-judicial decision. Are you guaranteeing to hire union labor? That's a bit of a minefield, because as you know, we cannot require that anyone provide union labor. If there's city funding involved, which makes it a public works project, they're required to pay prevailing wages, and there are strict reporting requirements and penalties to the city if they don't comply with them. But I think the path that the Planning Commission has sort of charted for itself by encouraging developers to, Commissioner Biagini can say it better than I can, explore, you know, apprenticeship programs and the like.
PLAs and the like.
Yeah. We, you know.
Project Labor Goals.
And we're comfortable with the way We, you know, wrestled with that and we're comfortable with the way that the seven of you have been presenting that to developers. Please don't say to a developer, I want you to, well, that's not that different from encouraging. I mean, you, you cannot condition the project on, on, on unionized labor. And again, the findings will be cleaner if you're less overt. You know, you're going to hire unions, aren't you? I mean, there, there are ways of framing it that are more likely to be problematic and less. We're going to do some examples in a little while and you'll see they're all gray areas. There's, it's hard to draw black and white lines here and that includes in this circumstance. But I think that the path we've chosen has gone pretty well so far. Okay, let me get back to the presentation, otherwise we'll be here all night.
I know where to be.
Let's see. Okay, so let's move into the last element of due process and that's the requirement to have a hearing before an impartial decision maker. What does that mean? Well, first of all, it is okay to have general policy positions. Having pre-existing views on general policy issues related to a matter does not create disqualifying bias. Due process does not require that you have no views or opinions at all. According to the California Supreme Court, it would be untenable to insist upon selection only of decision makers who have never thought about or expressed an opinion on the broad social, economic, or legal issues that inherently underlie approval, unapproval. You are expected to have general policy views. If any of you want to run for higher office at some point, it's vital that you have them. That's how you get elected. So you're not expected to be a tabula rasa. But due process does require that you don't have disqualifying bias. And you will have a disqualifying bias if there's either evidence that you have a specific prejudice against a person affected or a set of facts that impairs your ability to decide on appropriate grounds. So let me give you a few examples. We'll go through the due process cases. You've already heard about most of these. It was a long afternoon. I had to do something.
I really like your example.
Thank you. Well, got to make a dry subject mildly more interesting. So first, we've got the 2004 Court of Appeal case, Nasha versus City of Los Angeles. You've all heard of this before. This case concerned a proposed five dwelling residential project in the Santa Monica Mountains. Project was originally approved at the planning commission, at the, by the planning director, but it was appealed to the planning commission. But before the planning commission meeting, a commissioner wrote an article in the newsletter of our HOA called the Studio City Residence Association, calling the project a threat to a wildlife corridor because he believed it to be a threat to wildlife migration patterns. He also spoke against the project at a neighborhood association meeting. And then ultimately, he voted against the project along with two other planning commissioners and three votes were necessary to deny the project. The developer sued claiming that the commission was biased and the court agreed. The court concluded that the newspaper, the newsletter publication, the HOA newsletter publication and the statement at the neighborhood meeting demonstrated that there was an unacceptable probability of actual bias on the part of the commissioner. And because the commissioner's vote was the swing vote, the decision was tainted by bias. The court ordered the planning commission to throw out its decision and conduct a new hearing. Next case, the 2015 Court of Appeal decision, Woody's Group versus City of Newport Beach. In that case, Woody's Wharf Restaurant applied to extend its hours, add dancing and install a patio cover. The planning commission approved the request, but the decision was appealed to the city council. But in the meantime, a council member sent an email to the city clerk stating that he strongly believed that the operational characteristics requested in the application were inconsistent with the existing and expected residential character of the area and the relevant policies of the general plan. And at the ensuing public hearing, the council member read a prepared speech and then voted to deny the permit. On review, the court concluded that his email showed that he was strongly opposed to the project and demonstrated an unacceptable probability of actual bias. And the court nullified the council's action. More recently, we've got the 2020 case. This is Petrovic Development Company versus City of Sacramento. This concerned the Crocker Village project, which is, which is a large mixed-use project built on the site of an old railroad yard. The city initially approved a rezoning for residential and commercial uses, but later the developer applied to add a gas station to the plan. The planning commission approved the CUP eight to three, but then members of the Sierra Curtis Neighborhood Association appealed to the city council. The council overruled the planning commission and denied the CUP seven to two. The developer sued alleging bias by the council. And this was based on a series of facts. First, the, the developer alleged, well, the council member was a member of the Neighborhood Association that opposed the project. The council member made a statement in the association newsletter. The council member also lived fairly close to the project site, although far enough away for PRA purposes. Actually, the court rejected all these. They said, this is not enough. And the reason is mere membership in an HOA is not enough. I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean you agree with what your HOA does. And in this particular case, the statement that he made in an association newsletter was careful. He said that the gas station does not fit in the development as originally proposed, but then he actually said he could not announce a definitive position before voting. So he made a statement, but he was careful to say, I'm keeping my options open. And the court was not impressed with the fact that he lived in the neighborhood. His house was, there was no evidence that it was impacted more than any other house. But that wasn't the end of the story. The council member also contacted members of the Neighborhood Association and gave them a list of talking points that he suggested that they use to shut down the project when it got to council. The council member also was the one that made the motion to overturn the planning commission. The council member also gave the talking points to the mayor and the mayor then read those talking points at the council meeting. And the council member also had a number of contacts with the other council members. It's not clear exactly how many there were, but you know, one wonders if it was also a Brown Act violation. So the court found that there was unacceptable probability of bias and they overturned the council's decision. And this was particularly bad for the city of Sacramento because they ended up having to settle with the developer for a lot of money. They eventually agreed to buy one of the developer's buildings for $18 million and then pay him another $7 million in cash. They also had to name a park after the developer in the city. So not a great outcome for the city. And just keep in mind, all of these court cases concerned, was there bias, wasn't there bias? None of them concerned, was this a good policy call or not? So by being biased, or at least by demonstrating bias, they sort of lost their control over the land use. One more case. And this is the one where there was bias not against the application, but against the applicant. And that's what we call a common law conflict of interest. This is Clark versus City of Hermosa Beach. And this concerned a residential duplex project. The planning commission approved it, but in that city, you needed a CUP to build in that location. And a very outspoken neighbor opposed the project. He obtained signatures on some petitions protesting the approvals, claiming it would affect the ocean views. And he wrote a letter to the council objecting to the height of the proposed development. And then he had an unfortunate habit of running by the applicant's windows and yelling into their house. And then in the ultimate display of animosity, one night, he went down to their flower garden and peed all over their flowers. Now, the planning commission ultimately approved the project, but the approval was appealed to the council. Between the time of the planning commission and the city council meeting, there was an election. This person was elected to the city council. He then voted against the project with a three to majority. So the applicant sued alleging this was a common law conflict of interest and the court agreed. They said the personal animosity toward the, toward the applicant's demonstrated that he was not a disinterested, unbiased decision maker. So those are all the cases. I should note, those are pretty clear-cut cases. Cases where somebody has really crossed a red line. That, you know, they published an article about a project or they put into writing that they were going to vote against something. Or in that last case, they visited the applicant's flower garden. I've never seen a public official visits an applicant's flower garden. But the questions that you all usually wrestle with are a lot more in the gray area. So with that in mind, I'd like to look at some statements that came up at public meetings. Most of these are gray. They, they don't cross a red line. But nevertheless, to protect the names of the innocent and guilty, I didn't name who, which commissioner said the following things. But what I'd like to do is present a quote and then see whether you think it violates due process.
Jeopardy?
Or whether there should be some gentle revision that might bring it into safer ground.
I didn't think we were going to be going into this part, you know? No wonder Eric didn't show up today. He probably had a good idea what was going to happen.
Example one, there's, there's four, five examples. We have 60-plus data centers in the city of Santa Clara. This entire space is going to be like a graveyard. I can't say that enough. It is a graveyard of data centers. There are no people, there will be no activity, there will be no jobs, there will be no retail, there will be no schools, there will be no safe walking spaces around because it is just so dead. It is a dead soul. Is this okay?
Wait, was it said?
It depends who said it. Everybody is looking one direction, you notice that? Everybody's looking in one direction here.
I can hear myself say that, but I wouldn't say that.
Where was it said? At a study session maybe? Or was it in deliberation of a particular project?
That is an excellent point. Because if it was at a study session about data centers in general, it would be perfectly fine. If it was at a legislative decision, it would not really cause a problem either. If it was for a quasi judicial project, there's more potential for harm. For this particular project, it was a conditional use permit and a variance, which are quasi judicial decisions. Now, again, the findings are set forth in the resolution. And in this case, the commission found for the variance that there was nothing unique about this property. It was a very boring, standard-shaped lot. The commission found there was not a justification for granting a variance, which is a valid finding. If this were ever challenged, I would say, look, they made the findings, we've got a good record of that. I think we'd win the case. The applicant's attorney, if this had gone south, would have argued, well, sure, they made the findings for variance, but look at all this other testimony in the record, members of the jury. Do you really think they made their decision on the variance based on the shape of the lot? Or do you think they were predisposed to never approve a data center? So I'd just like to suggest that although I think you'd win this case, I think it's defensible. And again, you can have pre-existing views. You may want to be a little more concise if it's a quasi judicial decision, you know? On balance, I'd like to see more discussion about the findings for the variance than about data centers in general.
And thank you. Very well noted. Appreciate the actual honing in. So let, let's say this was in the, this was not unique to this project. The opinion is, is a valid statement across all. Like it's not honing in on a bias to this particular project. It's not honing on a bias to this particular applicant. It's a general statement presented at 50 other hearings for CUP then?
Yes. And we would try to use that in the defense. But what happens in a case where they challenge is that administrative record is created, which then the court will use in adjudicating the decision. The administrative record usually consists of all the testimony for that hearing. Typically, you can't pull in statements made at other hearings. So the court will not know that there were 50 other meetings where exactly the same thing was made. We can try and argue that, but it's, it's, it's hard.
That's where the sticky wicket is, right?
Yes. So there's some nuances.
Great. Thank you so much. You're well noted.
How many more you got? One more?
We know how to say it now.
Two?
Four. Well, four, I mean, the thing is, there's five examples, but two of them have two parts.
All right, go.
So yes, again, pre-existing views are okay, safer for legislative acts. For quasi judicial decisions, you still need to make findings. In this case, you found validly that there was no special circumstance for a variance. Second example, compliments. I love the project. Fantastic job. I just want to give you kudos. I'm, I'm glad you came in and I want to see you break ground as soon as possible. Very nice things said to a developer and concerns.
You know, that will never be me.
You've never said a nice thing to a developer, ever.
That's right. Inconsistent.
I don't know who said it, but that language sounds very...
Yeah. There it goes again.
So that, but that's not, no, I don't think I said it. I don't know, maybe I did. That's not showing any existing bias. So if you, if it's said during a meeting, you're just thanking somebody because after you heard it all, you liked it. So I would think it's not a problem.
After you heard it all?
Yeah.
You liked it?
After you...
That is not a problem. Here's the catch.
Oh, it wasn't after...
This was during the question and answer before the public hearing.
Oh.
The, the public had not yet spoken. And at this particular meeting, there were a lot of public speakers, some in favor, some opposed. So remember, it's important that you make your decision
After.
After the close of the public hearing. Even though I doubt the commissioner had, you know, completely made up their mind, I'm sure they listened to the public hearing, it's important that you don't show any cards until after you've heard everything. So it's easy during the question and answer to slip into discussion and statements and opinions. I would just urge you to be careful to try and limit it to questions when you're talking to the applicant and when you're talking to staff at the beginning before the public hearing.
So wait until after the rebuttal and the public hearing is closed and it's all said and done?
That's when you can show your cards.
And after the vote was taken.
After the vote.
Next example.
No, actually, I think we have the option to state our preference during conversation before a vote. I don't think that goes against policy.
But it's just after...
It's, as you say, showing your cards. But after the public hearing is closed, during the conversation amongst the commissioners, it seems fair to state a prefer, or a positive view of the project.
Yes.
After public hearings.
Absolutely.
After public hearings is closed.
Yes. And, yeah.
Okay.
Yes. And you have, and you have, you know, made similar compliments to good projects after the public hearing in other, in other cases.
Let's hear the next one.
I would hate to be on a commission of robots who do nothing but push the button and then sit there with a dead pa, dead face, you know? We have opinions, right? We should be able to express them as long as they're within the criteria of our commission duties.
I don't think you find this in this commission.
So I want this project.
We're not robots.
No. This commission is completely unique.
No robotics here.
I don't think, I don't think we're unique. Okay, here's the next one.
All right, next one. It was for a cell tower. What is the monetary value for installing this tower? How much are you compensating them? We basically already covered this, but any, any thoughts on this one?
I don't think that that's...
It's out of our lane.
Yeah.
It's, it's out of your lane. Remember, this, this was a conditional use permit and for a conditional use permit, the findings are general plan and zoning consistency, area compatibility, health and safety, and site suitability. And so really, this question didn't, wasn't tied to any of those four.
Hey, you're getting into their business, you're getting into their rights to do, even if it's something you don't like.
Yes.
Their right. Okay, got it.
The other part of developer financial... The other part of developer financials. What is your projected starting price for the homes going to be? Are they affordable? And forget the affordable homes, the regular homes. What are they going to cost?
Fantastic question.
I agree completely.
That's one of the best questions you have so far. I mean, I've got to give
That commissioner
Actually, it's one of the things that you mentioned during your presentation.
Well, yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Because this was a general plan amendment and a rezone, which are legislative acts. And even if it wasn't a legislative act, the cost of housing is very relevant to general plan policies in the housing element, even at market rate. So, that question was actually
Okay.
Valid. Now, they didn't have to give you an exact dollar value, they're not required to. But, you know, certainly, we have to know that they're going to comply with our affordable housing ordinance and all other applicable housing laws, so.
Would it be better to ask, again, I'm trying to not get us into any trouble here, but would it be better to ask a question more like, you have all these homes that you say you're building at market price, what is your definition of market price?
Yes, that would be fine.
Because then it's, you know.
Yeah.
And then getting into this whole issue of, if market price is one thing, then what would low, very low, affordable, get that span? That's going to get to the answer I think you're looking for, but might be a safer way of asking it. Am I correct?
What's your definition of market? I think so. I mean, it's, I mean, the problem is, they probably won't know at the time of the hearing exactly what they're going to sell them for, but they could give you
They know, they know exactly what it's going to be, otherwise, they wouldn't be in business. But one of the things, no, you know,
I stand corrected.
Seriously, one of the things is, when they come in front of the commission, the planning commission, they say, we're going to build all houses that are affordable. This project here is going to have some X amount of affordable houses, not including, you know, not, don't go by the, but the, what is it really going to be, you know, the value? What do you call affordable? How much do we call, that's what we like to know, so to see how it gauges with what the, you know, the market value and what the people can afford. For instance, I'll give you one, the ones on Prun Ridge, it said, Mark, remember when they tore down the church and they built those houses? There are going to be some affordable houses there? Guess where they're starting at? Take a guess.
Probably more than I can afford.
Three million. Holy smokes, huh? Thank you. And I'm trying to be funny because it was a church where they had built the houses, but, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that is out of my pocket.
Well, and, I mean, I think it's important to, you know, again, recognize that we are in the most expensive county in the country, so members of the public may not understand that, you know, even at affordable levels, prices are still really challenging. Okay, next, development timing. I'm worried that we're going to approve this project, but then the land's going to sit vacant for the next 10 years. What assurance do we have that you will start construction in the near term? Is this a valid question?
Yes, it is. I think so.
If it's one of the findings or something in there that says they will start at a date certain, then I would think, I might word it differently, but I would think it would be valid.
It's, yeah, definitely for development agreement, it's a valid and important factor for legislative action, yes. For quasi-judicial, it's probably valid, because, yeah, I mean, there's a general plan policy that says we, you will encourage the redevelopment of underutilized and vacant parcels. So, if they're just going to leave the land vacant, that goes against our general plan. So, it is actually a valid question. This is a trick question, though, because that's not actually the wording that was used. Here's the actual wording.
Okay.
"I want to see the ground broken up there, but why should I do business with you when it has taken so long? Would you do business with somebody who does that to you? Why don't you be honest? Be honest. Don't give me a bunch of..."
A bunch of what?
That is where the commissioner stopped speaking. That was, I was curious myself.
A bunch of prunes, bless.
Again, the question on timing is valid. The only reason, I'm not here to shame anyone, the only reason I put it up is because, is because you accused a developer of being dishonest. You said, be honest. Why don't you be honest? So, if I were the developer and the project had gone south, I would file my lawsuit that said, well, obviously, they were biased because they accused me of being dishonest, and I'm the most honest developer there's ever been. So, if there's a way you can avoid, even if you're confident they've been dishonest repeatedly, you know, ask them specific questions, you know, didn't you say you were going to build X by this year, and now it's a different year? But if there's a way you can avoid using adjectives, because I promise you, this will be exhibit A in the bias lawsuit they bring against the city, and we might have to pay, you know, $18 million for a building we don't want.
Would they file the
But that is kind of funny, though, that says, you know, they promised, it looks like they promised to build something at a certain amount of time, and years have gone by, 10 years have gone by, and nothing's been done.
Yes.
And they are asking you to give them another chance, and they're giving you a whole line of, you know, yeah.
I'm suggesting
And that's what it sounds like the whole thing was meant.
I think, again, the timing question is valid, and it's a good question. I'm just suggesting, please try to step back a little from saying anything
Don't be so forward, in other words, for yourself.
Like, in other words, say, well, you had another project, the ABC project, and you said you'd get it done in two years, and that didn't happen. So, I'm curious if you feel this one's going to come in on time per your description.
Those are specific facts you're listing. Here's what you did here.
Right.
I'm concerned you might not do it here, you know, but just avoid adjectives toward the developer. That's the main point I'm making.
Gotcha.
Here you call them dishonest, please don't.
So, but the question, I think, would be, would they file the bias lawsuit before or after the defamation lawsuit?
Well, I would file both at the same time.
At the same time, yeah.
Lawsuits for one. You know, there is a certain, a certain privilege for statements made in a public proceeding like this, so actually, they might not be able to bring the defamation suit. It's hard to show damages from defamation. All right, one more. This is not something happened at a meeting, it's a reporter asked for an interview about the tsunami of data centers hitting communities. Is it okay to talk about the tsunami?
Say, well, I don't know, what do you call a tsunami?
If there's an application coming up on a data center.
Zip it.
You think zip it? Okay, any other opinions?
Yep.
Well, I would avoid it. Whether or not it's legit or not, I would just not go there.
Well, that's the most conservative thing to do, and I'm never going to object to that.
All right.
But you're also members of the community, you're public officials, you have constituents.
That's
You can talk to the press, but you just have to walk that very
Well, that's where I, that's where my curiosity gets piqued a bit, like on some of these previous cases you were talking about, where people said horrible things, right? In public, okay. Is it excused if you're very careful to say, I am saying this as a, I mean, I can see the argument, but I'm saying this as a resident of the city, not as a member of any commission? I mean, I think that kind of gives you, you know, a little bit of protection, but I'm guessing that's still not a very smart thing to do.
Well, the next bullet point is, if you're going to speak, you should say you're speaking for yourself and not for the commission. So, that's a very good point. But that will not save you from a bias claim if you talk about a specific project. It doesn't matter whether you're speaking for yourself or the commission, if you say, I am going to vote no on that project next week.
Oh, well, then, yeah.
It doesn't matter. It's good that you state that, because unless the commission has specifically authorized for you to say X, Y, and Z at a public meeting, it's a Brown Act violation. So, it's important that you say you're not speaking for the commission. But to avoid a bias claim, you have to say you haven't decided about any specific project, and better yet, just avoid commenting on any specific proposal. You can talk in general about how data centers have a dead soul, but you shouldn't talk about a particular address or application.
Like, I don't like that kind of thing, but as a private citizen, I don't like it. That doesn't mean that an individual project might actually be pretty good. I'd have to hear what it's all about.
Yes, but also keep in mind, the person you're talking to is not your spokesperson. There's somebody trying to get a salacious clickbait story on the internet. So, are you confident they're going to report what you said
No.
Accurately?
No.
So, by talking to them, you are taking a risk, because if they publish the next day, Commissioner Biagini, you know, is definitely going to vote no on this project, is there going to be time for you to sort of clear those cobwebs and refute that before the meeting? And so, just
Don't.
There, well, I'm not going to say don't.
I am.
Again, but I'm just saying, tread carefully and understand there are hazards. So, you'll be happy to know those are the end of the examples. Let me just go through some takeaways real quickly. For quasi-judicial decisions, please ask questions relevant to making or rejecting the required findings. Please focus on the project, not the applicant or the opponents to the project. Pre-existing views are to be expected, but consider them, consider whether you want to share those at a quasi-judicial hearing. Be careful with statements that you make in public, at town halls, at homeowners association meetings, and other forums.
Or Facebook.
Facebook, to developers, to residents, in newspapers, newsletters, blogs, websites, Facebook, or emails. And, very importantly, don't share any views about a specific project until the close of the public hearing. Remember the distinction between legislative and quasi-judicial actions. Please continue to disclose your ex parte communications if you're going to speak with an applicant or anyone about a particular project. And there's something that you learn about the project, it's important you share that at the meeting, so that the applicant and the members of the public have a chance to respond, especially if it's something that's not in the staff report. If it's some fact that you learned, it's really important that that be disclosed at the hearing. And even when you do everything perfectly, keep in mind you will be accused of bias. You've been on the commission long enough to have developed a somewhat thick skin, and you know that even when you don't have any bias, someone disappointed with the decision will potentially allege that you made the decision on improper grounds. You're all looking at the same set of facts, and yet, you ruled against them. It's human nature, it's inevitable. So, please, don't give anyone any extra ammunition by saying something that will put more arrows in their quill to claim that you were biased. The most clear example I think of is, you recall about a year ago, maybe it was a year and a half ago, a developer was unhappy with the treatment they'd received at the HLC, and they wrote this long letter about how one of the HLC members was biased, and they were threatening to inform the FPPC. And so, I went through the four hours of testimony from the hearing and listened to it, and she did everything, right? She didn't say a single thing that was biased. Turned out, what the bias claim was, was that the HLC member was married to somebody who had commented on the environmental document, and, oh, well, if they're married, they must have, so, you're going to do everything right and still get attacked, and I'm sorry for that, but please be extra vigilant to avoid giving them any extra ammo. And finally, always do right, this will gratify some and astonish the rest. Questions?
I don't think we have any questions. Do we have any questions? No, you did a fantastic job. Do you have a question?
I have a tidbit of it.
Do you have a question? Do you have a question?
Just go ahead.
Go ahead. So, as a good example, I actually did give an interview, but one of the things I did as a protection was to record it for myself, you know? And that way, I knew that when I saw the article, if there was any misquote or corruption of the comments, I could point at it and request or require a retraction or a rewrite. And so far, I've never had to do that, but it's just a good tradition to get into. Do the meeting on Zoom, record the transact, or record the meeting completely, save it, archive it, and if it ever comes up, you have some admissible evidence that you did not say what was
Meaning that they knew it was, could be
Oh, I made it clear that I was
Oh, yeah, because otherwise, yeah.
It's not legal.
Oops.
Yeah, I think you have to
Yes, you do.
Clear that you're recording the session. And I said, you know, if you want to talk to me, that's how it's going to be, I'm going to record it, and I'm going to review the article. And that was perfect, the article came out fine, I didn't see any concerns.
Fantastic. Any other questions or anything?
No.
No, okay, so, thank you so much, Alexander, you did a fantastic job. Thank you for embarrassing all of us.
Yeah.
Now, reports on commissions, board, and committee, do we have anything going, Liz?
I do not have any announcements.
Nothing?
Nothing, so.
Oh, my God. How about the reminder on the American Planning Association California Chapter Conference in 2025, that is taking place in Monterey, September 28th through October 1st. Commissioner Huang, I believe you're going, and Eric, which is not present, has been registered to attend, have been confirmed, everything's good?
Yes, it's all confirmed, and they do know that. It's just a reminder, and they'll be getting emails from me in the next couple of weeks with additional details.
Any planning commission budget updates?
Yes, let's see here. Fiscal year budget is $17,365. To date, you have spent approximately $267. So, you'll want to look at that, your balance is $17,000. It's a good time to look at training opportunities, and Commissioner Chair Kru, we have your request from the last meeting, so it's on my tickler to look into that once the tickets become available for the joint venture event in January of 2026. So, it's a good time to plan ahead and how you plan to use your funds, whether conference, training, any equipment you need, study sessions.
Okay, thank you. Upcoming items, any upcoming agendas, anything coming up?
So, your next meeting is October 8th. Right now, we have two items tracking for that agenda, a tentative map application and a plan development rezoning amendment to conditions.
Okay, thank you. City council actions?
For that, since you last met in August, the council met on August 19th to review the public outreach policy update. The planning commission did review this in February of this year. The city council did vote 7 to 0 to continue the item, to bring it, sending it back to staff to broaden the scope and to consider the council feedback that was provided at that meeting. So, we will continue to refine that outreach policy.
Thank you so much.
Well, I have a quick question, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Was there any result from council on the iron fence issue?
And the Woodhams?
Oh, the Woodhams fence was not appealed. The homeowner is going to comply and remove the fence.
Okay.
And move the portion back to the setback that she can, yeah. We gave her till December to get that accomplished.
Thank you so much for bringing that up.
Yeah, good question.
Okay. Is there any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made by Commissioner Beatty and seconded by our secretary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries, the meeting's adjourned.
Very good, thank you.